Welcome to the CCTV and Cambridge Day City Council Candidate Forum. Niko Imac, longtime journalist and educator alongside Senior Editor of the Cambridge Day, Mark Levy.
Hello.
We are pleased to welcome all the candidates here today to have this dialogue and further the conversation. As many of the candidates know, this conversation will be a values-based conversation, and I know policy is very important, but we look forward to kind of understanding who these candidates are as people and leaders. Another disclaimer is that because of the number of candidates this year, we did have to break the candidates into two cohorts, and so we just want to acknowledge that the cohorts were self-selected by the candidates themselves based on time, schedule, and availability, and there was no influence by the Cambridge Day or CCTV.
We're gonna start this time with a question that we actually had two years ago and never got to because people spoke on the topics that came before so richly and thoroughly. It'll be interesting this time because we do have the two groups, and one is more heavily weighted toward incumbents and one is more heavily weighted toward challengers. And that has to do with a recurring question from maybe longer-term residents where you have people who appear to run for public office before they seemingly have entered public life. Let's see if I'm capturing this fully. Yeah, people whose arrival on the scene is running for council instead of like leading a civic group or serving on a commission or even like, you know, speaking extensively during public comment. We have people who are like, you know, repeating like recidivist public commenters or essay writers for letters to the editor. And so I'm just wondering, like, as you're going about it, especially for the challengers here, like, are you encountering this question as you door knock? Do you get the question from friends and advisors? Are you like asked about it by incumbents? If you're an incumbent, like, what's your take on like how you got into civic life? And I think, yeah, I guess we're also looking for insight into like, like, what are we missing in even formulating this question? Like, is there some element that we don't know about that we should, that sort of makes it make sense that this is like your arrival on the scene is running for office? Is there anyone who wants to engage on this?
I have to say that I have attempted for the last three years that I've lived here to be named to the planning board. I have an extensive background in development and planning and have been shut down. I have attended town halls. I have made my attempt to get in touch with city councilors who are in effective positions on housing, something I know very much about, and I have been shut out. And it really isn't, it has nothing to do with the people, it's the system. Incumbents here have an enormous and enormous advantage. They only need, you know, on average, 2,300 votes or a twelfth of the voting population that typically shows up, that's 30% of the voters that show up for a municipal election. And these people only need to focus on their small group of people who will show up and give them that 2,300 votes. And so incumbents have won over and over again. We have a city councillor who's been on the council for 24 years. We have one that's been on the council for 12 years. I think that even those of us, in fact, most people in Cambridge have arrived here since 2010. And so we are voices that are experiencing Cambridge, which is very different than what people who have lived here all their lives or for 40 years are experiencing. I moved to Cambridge in 1991 when I moved to the Boston area, but I lived here for two years and left. I came back and I was shocked at the changes. And I have worked in my community, East Cambridge, which I believe is underrepresented. And Elizabeth and I live there, and I think that there are many, many issues and people here who are not adequately represented.
Yeah, and then so actually, that's a question that I asked myself when I was thinking about running is like being newer, so I've been here about three years and having kind of been more recently involved in kind of the day-to-day aspects of the city and city politics of like, does, are people going to resonate with my voice? Are they going to, am I going to be able to accurately represent them? And what I found is actually people are really receptive, like, even if you haven't been as vocal at public comments still and kind of being a new voice and kind of taking up the challenge of running for city politics and trying to be that advocate. So it was something that I questioned myself, but in practice, I found that people have been very receptive, even if you don't kind of have that longstanding relationship as far as being on a board or kind of being a known voice during public comment. So I've been pleasantly surprised and really encouraged by the reaction from residents.
Berhan, what's your take?
I was going to say, I've been on all the sides of it. Before I first ran, I was Chair of the War Two Committee and started a little neighborhood group and was very active around the Affordable Housing Overlay, as I'm sure maybe Niko remembers from the other side. But, you know, I was also at one point, you know, a recent college grad trying to make it on City Council and like being the newer side. And now, like, I think I've like lived here over a decade. I think I've been here longer than some of the other contenders. And I think that's the beauty of the system is that we're not just like a single representative or part of the city. It's ranked choice voting, you get everyone's at large, and so you get different slices of life, right? You have some city councilors who have more of a following among people who have been here for generations and have that sort of accrued community knowledge. And then, you know, we are a city that is very mobile, that has a lot of newer people, and you have some city councilors who represent that perspective. And other city councilors, like, you know, my colleague Sambul Siddiqui cuts across both ways in different, interesting ways. So I think that, you know, I always welcome challengers. There's also an open seat this year, and I think that lots of people, like, running is always helpful. I'll say that this is actually perhaps the most competitive local elections in the Commonwealth, right? We both have like a challengers for every seat because every seat is at large. We've had two incumbents lose in the last three elections. So I think we're always getting feedback from the community of are we straying too much in one way or another or not being responsive enough? And then that's off-corrects in the election system. We get new people elected. And I think that even for challengers, it's a wonderful thing to run. You get to know other pieces of community that you just wouldn't get to know otherwise, right? Communities throw events like this, and then you get to go and engage and learn. And a lot of people who make it, like myself, run multiple times, and throughout that process, you get to learn more and more about the community and get to know them better. So I always welcome challengers, and I think that it's a great way for both people to get feedback.
I'd love to chime in here and say, right now, we're under the Trump administration. People are seeing that experienced politicians aren't addressing a lot of the issues that we're facing in our communities, the urgency that we need. And so in that way, part of how I'm navigating our campaign is like, okay, tell me more about the issue that you care about and why you think that I wouldn't be necessarily someone who's fit to talk about you, like, talk about what you care about, understand what you're going through, and actually learn the methodologies in which I want to leverage city council resources to execute. Because at the end of the day, we've had politicians in office for years, and people are still talking about the housing crisis, people are still talking about the cost of living. And so we owe it to one another to be welcoming in conversation about people who don't have that like political established experience. So that's where our campaign comes in. And then, and another piece of that is, and I experienced this more in 2023, but since then I've been really active in the community around local organizing, is our campaign has become a practice of what politics should be like. It isn't necessarily campaign and then be in office because people are looking for a different kind of politics. It's, we're looking for a new era of politics that actually educates people and empowers them to be in the process. Because right now, a lot of people are disenfranchised by politics on the national level, the state level, and the local level, and our campaign is trying to reimagine how we even view politics. And so we're trying to put that in practice.
Dana.
Sure. Yeah, I respect that perspective a lot. I think that kind of taking a step back and looking at what city council's role really is, is to represent the interests of residents. And our city is a very hybrid city. I mean, our city includes so many young folks, includes old folks, includes people who have lived here for generations and really everything in between. So my personal take is that I think that the city council really should reflect the city. And I actually think that there is value to institutional knowledge, but I don't think that should comprise the whole council. I do think that there is absolutely a place for fresh ideas and people who can represent that voice of folks who have arrived in the city, people have been there for a decade. So I do think that there is a role for folks with a fresh perspective.
We do not mean to lapse into a pattern of calling on people. This is more of a re-approval.
I appreciate you. I feel like it's easier to chime in.
I'll jump in here if it's okay, Mark. So, so no one, there's only been a few folks at the doors who have asked me that, that question. The vast majority of folks are electing someone based on their qualifications. I don't really think folks are truly electing based on how long you've been in, in Cambridge. I will say that if that's the criteria that folks choose, you can't really change that. And so I'm not too focused on that. You know, I'm, I'm very sort of happy and proud of my career trajectory. I came to the USS as an immigrant, I've moved around quite a bit, and I'm making a home here in Cambridge. But what I will say to folks who are thinking about it in that way, about whether we should, you know, only elect folks who have been here a certain amount of time is, are you happy with the present system? I mean, are you actually satisfied with the way city council works? Do you feel that it's responsive to you? Do you feel that your input is actually being considered? Are you happy with the trajectory that Cambridge is on? Because the vast majority of people that I talk to who have been here for about a decade or more are not. There's a lot of anger at the doors, and I'm sure the vast majority of you have experienced it as well. And so these are the people that time and time again you have been electing, is the same old voices. Some of them, as Denise said, who have been on council for 20 years, others who are seeking a 10th term in office, right? And so these are, if you really want change, you have to change the folks that you are electing, and you have to bring in fresh voices into the conversation. With regard to your question mark earlier about what brought us in to this, to this race and why we're, why we're running, what other public service we've had before now, I did go to public comment, much like Louise did. And I've seen many of you at public comment at one time or another. But public comment is not really an institution where you get a lot of engagement from city council. And there's really no opportunity to sort of hear, city councilors don't have to respond to you during public comment. And the real catalyst for me getting into the race and feeling like the only way that I could make change is to change the system by changing city council is a particular vote that happened in April where there was the Transitional Wellness Center, a 58-bed homeless shelter that was a dry shelter, one of the largest in, in Cambridge, that was closed by the city council for no reason other than the fact that they said that we couldn't afford it. Rise Up was suspended at least for a year, maybe two, we don't know when it's going to come back, but 7,000 people benefited from low-income cash assistance to families for things like groceries, school supplies, last dollars on rent, and the city council said we couldn't afford it. We lost that vote five to four. And so if you have these basic necessities during the time when we're coming under attack, much like Aya was talking about earlier by the Trump administration, and we're cutting basic necessities here in Cambridge, and we have dozens and dozens of people show up to public comment and express a desire to save these programs and a desire to frankly, if it, if it results in a slightly higher property tax, they'd be willing to pay it. A lot of folks said that. And the city council simply rejects that notion, says we can't afford it despite having the lowest property tax in, in the area, and, and basically throws 58 people, potentially 58 beds out the window, throws 7,000 potential folks that benefit from Rise Up, you know, to the wind. So there's really no choice, I think, for many of us but to run for city council. Because as you've experienced as longtime residents and as we've experienced as relative newcomers, the city council is not responsive, and the only way we're going to get response in this is to change the system itself and change the politics that we're all bartering in. And I hope we do come back to this conversation of what the, the political culture is of city council that I raised, because I think that's an important conversation for later, but I'll, you know, yield the floor.
Just a brief side note before we move on, it is my understanding that Rise Up was funded by COVID aid funds.
That's correct. That is absolutely correct.
So it might be better to say that it wasn't picked up for city funding afterward, but it's not that it was, I think your term was suspended or?
Well, so the program existed, it stopped existing. To me, that's a suspension. Did the city take on the funding for it after the federal government stopped funding it? No, it did not. And so I'm happy to, I'm happy to say it that way, but the fact is, 7,000 people were benefiting. The city had the opportunity to continue serving those 7,000 people. They chose in a vote not to continue serving those 7,000 people because they said, we can't afford it, when that is a blatant lie in many respects. And Berhan was one of the people who voted against it.
Yeah, let's hear about that.
Sure. First of all, I think that you're mixing up two votes. You're right about the Transitional Wellness Center where we were on different sides. I did vote for Rise Up, so I think that we're talking about different things. That's fine, you can, we'll get a fact check later. Yeah. So.
No, go ahead.
So I was going to say a couple of things. First is like, you know, in general, I'm very receptive to all the feedback. I will also note that like, you know, there was three colleagues that joined last term, right? When I joined, there was two new colleagues. The majority of city council has been serving for less than four years, right? So this, like, I did just want to start off with there, with like, we have a lot of new people on city council, and like, I think that's a great thing. But also, it's not as though the majority of city council has been serving for like many decades or anything like that. The majority of the city council is fairly new.
That's a good redirect. I didn't want the larger conversation to get lost if people had more to say on that.
Do you mind, so I actually intentionally wanted to go last because my question that I've been asked isn't necessarily as much about time in Cambridge as it is about youth. Because, you know, naturally, somebody who's in their twenties is going to have less experience than someone who's 50 or 60 who's had a whole career. And I had a mentor of mine when I was a teenager who was a CEO of a rather large company who would tell me that to be a president or a CEO, you don't need to know everything, you need to know what you don't know, and you need to know who knows it. So for me, my response to those questions is normally, I know I don't know every single thing to run a city, but I know that I can get mentors that have not only more experience in the field than I've been alive, but also have been longtime Cambridge residents. So it's not necessarily a one or the other, right? You can have someone who comes from a different city, brings in fresh ideas, fresh perspectives, but also has a big network of people that are right there for them to consult and ask questions that really help guide them towards long-term solutions and understands that professional background that I may not have. I'm not an architect and a city planner and all of the different components that you might have. And the truth is, nobody running is, right? Everyone has some area of weakness, and it's really important that we're incorporating a kind of larger advisory board to make sure that we're understanding it all. And then just to bounce off that question or comment on if you haven't been here long enough, it's really hard. I talked to one resident in particular who is in his 80s, and he had been in Cambridge, he said, for over 50 years, and had a comment about, you know, we need more people that have been in Cambridge for at least 20 years. That was his quote. And I said, well, respectfully, I have a different opinion and perspective because of my background. When I went to Cornell, it's in Ithaca, New York, and just a couple of years before I went, they had gotten rid of parking minimums completely. And because of that, I was there right at that time, a few years later, that I was able to see what that resulted in, whether it was less parking available or it was issues with people that had accessibility issues now not being able to go to those apartment buildings because there was no handicap spot. So it was something that I was able to see a few years before, you know, Cambridge was actually implementing that. So I kind of got to see almost like a little piece of what the future could be. So that's something that helped build my perspective. So I do think that it's really important to have those perspectives while incorporating the people that have a full understanding of Cambridge's history, whether it's 20 years or, you know, I talked to one person who's fourth generation and they're in their 80s. So between them and the family stories they have, it's 120 years, right? So there's all of that range of perspectives I think is important.
I just have to say, you know, Cambridge has a billion-dollar budget, and we've passed all of these very ambitious laws. Affordable Housing Overlay was passed in 2020 and reformed in 2023, and now we have 62 units built based on the 100% affordable housing overlay. Now, there's 459 that are under construction. My challenge is, yes, we need expertise, and the city council, the city council should demand more, they should ask more questions and demand performance from the Community Development Department. Why don't they set goals and say, well, they said in 19, in 2019, and envisioned that we needed 12,500 new units. Guess what? We've only created a little over 5,000. So how are we going to make that up in a time when our budget's going to be under constraint? And yes, we need to make hard choices. Are we going to spend $150 million creating more bike lanes? Or are we going to take care of those 7,000 people who can't, who can't get Rise Up support anymore? And what's happening to them, I don't know, is CDD following what's happening to them? I have no idea what they do because I don't see results, and that's my concern. I've been a business person, I've been in public, and I am concerned because with all of the resources in Cambridge, we're just not getting it done.
Yeah, and I think that like we have a very, like, our residents, they're highly educated, they're highly involved in the city, and they can recognize when those things are not being followed through. So I think I've seen unmultiple issues where there's an underlying problem of us not being able to properly prioritize things that actually matter for residents and then follow through on those. So I think the Wellness Centers, the Transitional Wellness Center is a great example of that, where we have a very large unhoused population in the city of Cambridge, I think over 500 unhoused people still as of last year. And those Transitional Wellness Centers do have really great outcomes. They do get people from kind of on the street through to being, to a situation where they're going, not going to be put back into where they're using or they're kind of, are going back kind of onto the same situation that might cause them to relapse. So it's how are we looking at where we're spending our money and the outcomes of that money? I think that's not something that we do enough, and council, like, you're not supposed to be the experts, but you are supposed to ask good questions. And so how we can be doing more of that so we're not just kind of looking at things surface level, but asking the deeper questions of how are things going, why, and what, what is the result at the end?
We are lucky to have a council fact-check, I guess, is one way to put it. Can we hear from Berhan about what Louise said and then get to Stan and Aya?
Yeah, I was going to say, I just also wanted to finish my point from earlier, which all connects together. I was gonna say, hopefully we can keep this conversation open. Like, I don't mind taking questions and defending the council this term, but also if it's like, and it's like one of those Jubilee videos, one councillor versus eight challengers. So I think that's fine. So I want to say, like, you know, policymaking is deliberative and it takes a while, and I think that it is difficult for like newcomers in particular because you show up at a moment in time and you're like, you know, I'm making a point, like, why is like policy not changing around these opinions, right? And, and I think that that's what makes it difficult, like, for the Transitional Wellness Center, for example, right? There was two votes. There was a first vote, which was a 5-4 vote where it goes in the positive of like, hey, is there a way that we can interrupt a closure, right? The closure had been something we had been planning for a year and a half, and it is something that we do with a lot of shelters, which is we have seasonal shelters, seasonal programs, right, that shut down in the spring and fall. And specifically, the Transitional Wellness Center was set up with ARPA money, and so it was never meant to be a permanent program. Now, you can take a fault at that and say like, it should have been a permanent program, we should have planned for that, right? And so I voted for the first thing, like, hey, like, I think people are bringing up a good point. Is there a way that we can respond to this? And then in my conversations with the city manager, it was an incredibly expensive program, over $50,000 per resident, right? And so I was able to say like, hey, let's do municipal vouchers where we can get those same number of people homes instead for a much cheaper amount, right? You can still at the end of the, say, like, you know, the Transitional Wellness Center was a better program and all of these things, and I think that's a very valid feedback and a concern and different perspective. But I don't want this notion to be that, hey, like, city council just let like more people out to be homeless than before. It was a net additional amount that was increased. And, and I would say that it was the same with like other votes, right? So like that first vote was a singular vote on the Transitional Wellness Center. The second was a triple vote on three different things that were disjointed, and I felt like we were spending a little bit too much at a time where we were also trying to create a stabilization fund to backfill programs. And so I said in that meeting, very publicly, like, hey, I support Rise. Like, I think out of all the programs, just giving poorer people money is the single most effective thing that you can do. And so I said, let's come back in the fall because it was a difference between the community foundation, CCF, and like the city on like what exactly these funding levels, we had not figured out details. Also, because it was funded through ARPA before, we could fund them directly, whereas in general in Massachusetts, we talk a lot about the anti-aid amendment. It becomes much more difficult to give people cash directly. And so there was a lot of details to figure out. And so I was like, I support Rise, I will vote for Rise, and I said this during that meeting, let's just figure out the details because it seems like we're on different pages, and to take a triple vote on funding three different things where the details are very different is not what I'm ready to do, given that we have not talked about this before. So I would say that that was my version of the story. But also, I think that, you know, my colleagues and I disagreed. It was like 5-4 votes at different times, and so I think there's many different narratives. So I'm wearing this, you know, dual-faced hat of both protecting, of both like defending my particular position, but also the city council as a whole. So, you know, I hope it comes off all right.
Okay, so Stan, Aya, and we might need to seal this up and move on to the next question. How funny that Zion thought he was having the last word.
Well, first of all, Berhan, I, I am sorry that you're sort of being fed to the wolves as the only councillor here. I, I respect the fact that people chose their time slots, but I, I do think, you know, I think in the future it is necessary for us to make sure that there's a mix of incumbents and challengers, also because this is an opportunity to hold people accountable. We only get it once every two years, and even then, a lot of the incumbents have too much fear and don't have enough courage to sit on the same stage as challengers and take questions like this and actually have any kind of discourse. That's something that, this is one of the literal few places you're even going to see this during this campaign cycle. So thank you for the structure of the forum, I really appreciate it, I wish there were more like it. But with regard to what you were saying, Berhan, it's, it's not a net increase. So we, we talked about what happened with the Transitional Wellness Center closing, and one of the things that was so frustrating is while the municipal vouchers are great, it's going to help about 20 people get permanent housing if we continue to renew it on an annual basis. But there was 50, there was 58 beds at that shelter, right? So, and at a time when the Trump administration is trying to cut Section 8, at a time when people are losing housing and people are losing their work as the economy is deteriorating and as low-income people are feeling the attack most from the Trump administration, we need to keep all those shelter beds as possible, as many as possible. So it's definitely not a net increase, and it's one of the things that frustrated me, and we could have done both. We have the capacity to do both. But I think Berhan's response is really exemplary, I think, of what we have going on with the council at large, which is that we are often fiddling at the margins of a problem. We have a serious inequality problem here in Cambridge, and it has only grown over the last few decades. And it's only going to grow as the economy deteriorates here, okay? And so there were programs like Rise Up that were just beginning to scratch the surface of, of addressing that, providing some opportunity for families. And so unless we're willing to not just say 1 million out of a $1 billion budget goes to municipal vouchers, or we can't fund a homeless shelter, unless, unless we're willing to make more significant trade-offs than that and we're willing to make commitments to our low-income population here, it's not going to matter how, how much housing you build because affordability without addressing inequality is not going to get us to a place that's aligned with our values, all right? So that's, that's really what, what I'm, what I'm here arguing for and trying to center into this campaign. And by the way, your reporting, the, the reporting of the, of the Cambridge Day, Mark, you know, just a few weeks ago was about how we have, you know, record food insecurity here in Cambridge, right? Over the last four years, since 2001, we've had a 400% increase in deep food insecurity in certain census tracts of Cambridge, right? So we are doing things to Louise's point, we could, we could, you know, pull things out of the budget, we could copy and paste them into an editorial, as, as, you know, has recently been happening in your publication. But what are the impacts? Is inequality diminishing? Is food insecurity diminishing? Are people generally happier with the state of Cambridge? Are rents coming down? What is the impact of any of these policies? And I do think we need to be able to have some accountability, and this goes back to the political culture, again, point that Aya mentioned. I hope that at some point during these two hours, we can, we can really talk about the political culture of council, because there is a culture of not holding folks accountable. There's a culture of everyone being incredibly nice and civil to one another, and I, I think collegiality is really important, but it cannot come at the cost of accountability. If we do not, if none of the councillors are willing to call each other out publicly, if there can be no public debate, if all of these conversations happen behind closed doors, that really is a detriment to our democratic process. And I do think we need to have an open conversation about what's happening, and people need to openly and publicly disagree. So we can come back to that at another time. I'll yield the floor.
Yeah, similar echo to folks here with the format, I just want to appreciate the fact that you're yielding all these because I know it can be difficult to be sitting amongst challengers. I, I will say, I do think some of what you said does paint the picture in a way that I don't think is fair. As one of the people who is organizing with the people in the wellness center that was being closed down, people who were literally relying on the medicine and access to healthcare in that space, people who were so appreciative of the food that they were being able to access in that space, I, I'm emotional about it because our city does not center neglected people. Who is being left out? We don't talk about it enough. Our city has gone through so much displacement of stories of a lot of black and brown communities, whether it's from institutions like Harvard or even within our own city. So our campaign is trying to say, wait, what is our city council doing and who is it leaving out? And sure, the city had been planning the closing of the wellness shelter for one and a half years, more or less. But they hadn't even announced it to the people in the center until like a month, uh, maybe before? So these people were just in shock. They weren't even given transparency from the city. And I don't think that is, I don't think that should, that speaks to our values. I mean, if we're gonna do that, which, right? Isn't be, it shouldn't be something that we are doing to at least give people the dignity and the time to be able to figure out what to do next. That's part of why we organized for the municipal housing vouchers. That's why when the city manager, which we can talk about our form of government, it's when the city manager pit vulnerable groups against each other saying, well, it's either Rise Up or it's either the voucher program. Why do we, when it comes to the neglected people, say, oh, we don't have much money? But when it comes to other issues, we do. And so that's part of a lot of my frustration in city council. And it's not to like put all this out on you if you're just the incumbent here. It's to say like, what are our values in our city? And our campaign is just tired of seeing people on the street with stories that are not being heard. Our campaign is tired of talking to residents from shelters that are being closed down by the city and literally working to empower them, to let them know that their voices are real, that they are dignified human beings, that our city shouldn't do this. And yet here we are. Um, and then on the homelessness topic, our city doesn't even have much access to homeless shelters. Um, the one that we do have access to even in conversation also brings up a conversation on the stratification of access to shelters, which is like a wet shelter or a dry shelter. And where are people's safety when it comes to conversations like those? Because not everyone feels safe in a wet, in a wet shelter versus a dry shelter. So those are some things I wanted to bring up because I don't think the city was transparent with those people. I don't think the city was fair with how they navigated it. And we had to fight for those municipal housing vouchers. We had to fight for them because the city was pitting people against each other. Um, I also just wanted to add, you mentioned that not a lot of people have experience on the city council for many years. But I just wanna also put this into more context that some of the city councils have been school committee members. It could be argued, right? They've been a part of the political conversation for more than a year since they have been on city council, right? Like, they might be new to city council, but they've been a part of these conversations for years before. So I just wanted to recognize that.
And think about like, city, like, we could be doing better. We could be doing, sorry, I know.
Yes, of course. This actually dovetails into our next question, but please finish your thought.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we could be doing better for those groups. And um, I think that, I'm sorry, now I lost the chat.
It's perfectly fine. I, with great reluctance, I do wanna like hand the next question off to Nico. I, my advice to everyone is that you do what politicians always do, which is you ignore whatever question is asked and you put in whatever you want when you think of it. But
And I will say, my next question builds on the first. And so if you didn't have a chance or you wanna add more, I think this would be a great opportunity. Uh, parts of this conversation, uh, while you were speaking reminds me of one of the great uh, Boston movies, Gone Baby Gone. Uh, Casey Affleck tells Ed Harris, uh, he says, I was born here, who are you to have a say? And Ed Harris responds, he goes, yes, I'm from an outsider, uh, but I've lived here longer than you've been alive. So who's really, you know, gets to, gets to have an opinion here. Um, but my question really builds on this idea of experience. I think when we think about politics, uh, whether it's local or national, um, you know, you would find some uh, who believe that uh, the qualifications for office require an Ivy League degree. Um, some require, you know, a law degree, or I think with this council, a perspective in architecture or housing. I think if you ask a younger generation, they might argue that an activist lens is needed on the council. And so I guess my question to you, I believe all experience is valid. Um, but why is your experience needed on the council? And I guess more generally, what experience is missing from the council currently?
I served in office in a little community that had 5,000 housing units. And during the time that I was there, we built over 180 housing units. Mainly through a housing trust, which is something that, that Provincetown got adopted through the state legislature. It was a very onerous thing to go through. But in any event, it targeted people who actually lived or worked in that community. Why hasn't Cambridge done this? I don't know. Well, but the fact is, um, I am an old white woman, okay? And I've had a lot of experience. I'm an activist. I've been an activist all my life. My mother was a welfare mother. I don't need to go through all of this, but I'm a mother myself. And the thing is, is that my life experience has been turning around big projects, building some actual modestly priced housing for young people, including my own son and his wife. So I have experience in getting things done. I've run a small business that almost ran us, ran us into bankruptcy during um, the early 2000s. I've got a lot of experience. And my whole goal is to make sure that with all of the resources we have in Cambridge and all these wonderful young people, many of whom thousands are leaving every year. Not just poor people, but middle income people who can't stay. And I meet them here, there and everywhere because they simply can't stay. It makes no sense for them to stay here. They can move to Arlington or a Watertown and they can have a home and a decent school and a transportation system and not the stress of the finances here. And yes, it is a community where we are the rich and the poor. But we're not just that. We have a lot of aspiring people. Look at them, right here, who want to be a part of it. Do you think all of them are gonna be able to live here in 10 years? I don't think so. I think they're gonna go someplace. And we're losing a lot of talent. We're losing a lot of people at all levels. And the city council has to be responsible for making sure that we have housing, that we have transportation, that we have public safety, that we have schools, and that we give people support.
Please.
Yeah, I think that's, that's very valuable as a point. And I also suspect that when I've been on the campaign trail, I also hear questions about, well, how lo- how long have you been in Cambridge? And I think part of it is, well, what's your experience? But I also think a part of it is, why are you running? I mean, what, if you just like land here, why are you just jumping in exactly, right? Whereas I do think that there is some trust in someone who has lived here for a little while. And there's a little bit of trust um, in that they're invested in not just like furthering a career, but also invested in that particular community. But on the other hand, I do think that there is, well, there is so much value. And I, I do think that the council could benefit from some fresh ideas uh, as well. And I think that there is some value in kind of being outside of the political sphere a little bit. Um, because you get to see the water in which everyone swims and recognize it in a way that people who have just been in politics so long don't necessarily do. So, for example, I mean, I've been here for 10 years, but I've never really, you know, I've worked in, I've, you know, been in the board of nonprofits and such, but I haven't been in politics per se, right? But one thing that I know is that the city does value equity, right? Equitable voice, making sure that those who are, are most desperately vulnerable are heard and that their interests actually translate into action. So one thing that I think it's important is, you know, if we're going to get to the bottom of this, we have to think at a deeper level here. We have to think at a like, more systemic level, which is that, yeah, a lot of these folks' voices aren't heard. Well, why? Well, a lot of the reason, a lot of the, the voices that dominate the conversation are public comment, which I think is a great institution, right? Anyone should be able to go up and have their voice heard. But those are not representative of the full affected communities. And I think most people understand that. So I do think that, you know, one thing that I think is recognizable is a little bit more of an outsider is that we don't have to do it that way. I mean, that doesn't need to be it. We could do what Somerville does, which is they partner with Zen City. And they basically have like proactive outreach that allows people, I mean, people canvass every, you know, lots of doors at every two years. But that shouldn't be just right before elections, right? We should go out and make sure that, you know, the most vulnerable, who probably would never make it to public comment, like their voice is more rigorously kind of understood on impactful issues.
Berhan, please.
Um, I, I think like both Stan and I, you guys were actually very kind, even though I know we have like deep disagreements on stuff. Um, and, and so I'll return the favor to all the challengers. I think that a lot of the challengers are asking good questions, right? I think that, you know, there's nine city counselors who have very distinct perspectives, but like we're a city of 120,000 people and probably have as many opinions, you know? Um, and so there's a lot of different ways to do them. And I think a lot of the challengers are bringing a lot of uh, ideas that are either new or like, you know, all, all nine incumbents have their own ideas, but maybe there's ideas that are not thinking of. Uh, and that can be really additive. Um, I guess to give a concrete example rather than leave it at the high point, I, I was reading Dana's AMA before coming here because I was like, you know, I wanna know what everyone's thinking about. And like one of the things that I struggle with is that like, you know, in Central Square, there's a lot of undeveloped parking lots that are owned by private people, right? And in Harvard Square, we have a similar challenge of underutilized property that's owned by Gerald Chan. And it's like, there are way to go about that, right? We've struggled with a vacancy task. We've done zoning reform. None of those things has moved. And like Dana was talking a little bit about a land value task, right? And actually incentivizing people to do something with underutilized land. And I was like, okay, that's an interesting idea that has not actually gone through city council before. So I think that a lot of challengers running like really do bring up a lot of good points, either critiques or new ideas that can be really informative.
Sure.
So I'm gonna do something you're not supposed to do in politics and try to answer the question very directly. I noticed that I could not, but I'm gonna try.
We appreciate that.
When it comes to what I think is needed on the council, as someone with an Ivy degree, I do not think that that's uh, one of those requirements. I actually think that a lot of times real world experience is really important. I would love if we had someone who was an actual builder on the council who has been on projects and seen issues. I was talking to a woman who was talking about zoning concerns. And she's worried about the expansive zoning that's happening in the city. And she said, but the old zoning didn't work either. We built a deck and we had it approved and everything was fine. And a year and a half later, they came and said, somebody put in a complaint. They got it, you know, surveyed and it was eight inches too far. And they needed to take down part of the deck and do a rebuild because of eight inches. And those type of issues are something that I saw all the time as a land surveyor. We see little issues where a fence would be put up and it'd be one inch over. And then they have to take down the whole fence and it's thousands of dollars of work because of an inch. And, you know, when that happens, that's private property. So that's one thing. But when it comes to the city and are planning for zoning, we can't just see it as, you know, behind a, an office, a behind a desk, right? Where we're looking at it very theoretically. We have to understand the actual implications that are going to happen from the, the acts that we do. So when it comes to what I would like to see more on the council, I think a lot of people have brought up finance issues. And that's part of the reason that I wanted to run. Um, I don't think the Ivy component is necessarily needed, but I do think that we need more people that understand our finances, that understand when we're having those tough decisions. And also evaluating like how much things are costing and is that even reasonable? Because a lot of times we're having what I hear everyone refer to as the Cambridge tax, right? Where things just cost so much more to build here, services cost so much to provide here. Why are we paying so much more, not just as a city, but as individuals? And what can we do to mitigate those costs and make sure that we're more, uh, you know, I know the greater Boston area is always gonna be more expensive than some areas in the country, right? But why are we particularly so much more expensive? And I think that that's something that really needs to be addressed.
Um, yeah. And so what's funny is like, this is actually the question I get more um, on the campaign trail is not how long have you lived here, but like, why are you qualified for council? Um, and I think that's where I am uniquely positioned because in my day to day role, I'm doing a lot of the things that are kind of what council does. So I'm making decisions about budget that are going to be impacting hundreds of people. Um, I am having to make really those decisions with actually very little information and not a lot of expertise. So I think that's where I, I now remember what my point was earlier was that we could be doing better because we shouldn't have to pit those two groups against each other if we have a proper way of evaluating these programs where cost is just one aspect. Um, we need to be looking at what is the impact on residents? Is it kind of, and is it bringing value? And that's something that I look at at all aspects is, is not only something, um, are we doing it because we said we do it? But is it still bringing value? Is it going to be kind of, um, what if what we've implemented is going to be achieving that end goal? And so I think that's the experience that I would bring to council is having been in those executive conversations and situations where um, you're kind of, again, you're going off of potentially very little information, but having to make decisions that impact a lot of people. And sometimes those are really hard decisions. I've led companies through mergers and acquisitions where we had to make griffs and had to say, hey, who do we keep? Who do we not keep? And it's really hard, but the more data you have, the more you can go out and kind of make objective, um, those decisions more objective and then properly communicate them. And I think that's where Cambridge has really struggled on like, we make these decisions, but we're not necessarily communicating properly why and getting people on board along the way. So if we're gonna be making a housing change, are we doing um, not just kind of one or two public meetings, but are we really engaging residents through the process? Are we able, are they able to see the impact of um, their comments so that they feel like they were part of it? And it's that feeling um, of being part of the process that can turn somebody who would normally be on the negative end into a positive. And so that's kind of been my role throughout companies is bringing the company along, especially when we're having to make, like say, hey, we're going to be pivoting, we're going to be making some cuts and kind of making sure that people are still feeling positive about it and that we're able to look towards the future rather than kind of spiraling into um, kind of the negatives. And so I think that's what I would like to see for Cambridge. We are gonna be, we're gonna be going into a budget deficit. We're going to have to make some really hard decisions. Like, there's no way about it. There's no amount of property tax increase that's going to negate that. So how do we make them smartly? How do we make sure it's not impacting our most vulnerable the most? Um, and uh, yeah, and how do we kind of use it as a way to make Cambridge better and more sustainable um, in the long run?
I think that part of the thing is individual counselors are not capable of getting all the data. What they are capable of is asking the right questions and asking as many questions as they can and making the um, staff in, in the city accountable for providing that information. And we've all had that experience of not being able to get information we need. Well, it's their responsibility to get that information because you're right. You need to understand exactly what's going on. Why wasn't that arrangement with Spalding renegotiated? I'm a business person. That's what I do. I go and renegotiate whatever the deal was. They're a nonprofit organization. They have a commitment to the community. Why wasn't that done? I spent tens of millions of dollars of Citicorp's money making projects that weren't, weren't working. They were commercial projects, um, worked. And I had to put together teams, but you know what? I managed to get people who really knew what they were doing. And we, we made those decisions based on what was gonna have an outcome. And we made it happen. And that's what I'd like to see with the city council. You can pass all the laws you want, but laws don't build housing. They don't build housing.
And I think that's where like we, um, there might be things that we didn't know, like not everything is being communicated to residents. Not everything should be communicated to residents as far as what goes on. But how we got to this, how we got to the decisions, why we got to those decisions and what we expect the impact to be, that is something that we do have responsibility to residents. Because again, we're only seeing one part of the picture. There might be other things going on within city departments as well.
I, I wanna be very clear. I think all paths lead back to Rome, right? All experience is, is valid and every perspective is credible. Um, I think we did a really good job answering the second part of my question, but I do wanna kind of pivot back to the first part. Why is your experience needed on the council? I, I did see your hand.
Yeah, so I'm gonna first answer the second half and I'll come to the first half. Um, well, I just wanna say, I don't think we're in a deep disagreement.
I was thinking about that too. I agree, I agree, I agree.
Um, but uh, I just wanna say that I view politics in this way. I don't think politics should be about politicians being a politician. People are tired of that. People are tired of people who find ways to listen, like make you hear what you wanna hear. I think politics should be about human beings who know how to listen and critically think. Which alludes right to the point that you were saying, ask the questions and know what to ask, who's being left out, things like that. In terms of my own experience, I come from a background of advocacy on different issues, whether it's gun violence prevention, whether it's local organizing here on issues like homelessness, um, also on the pilot agreement with Harvard, right? We talk about what are ways that we can bring more revenue in when we're potentially seeing a budget deficit? It's like, we can't, like, we don't have to have functional fixedness. We don't have to come to an obstacle and say, hands up, like, we can't do anything. We have to be creative. We have to find ways to bring in revenue that don't burden people. There are equitable ways to do that. So I, I wanna try to push us past that barrier and, and try to imagine a politics where we can. And not necessarily say, ooh, like, we're gonna be, you know, making tough cuts or this is kind of what brought us to that city manager situation, putting vulnerable, vulnerable groups against each other. So my advocacy experience brings that piece in because I'm not someone who wants to put my ideas on you. I actually like to listen to people and it's part of, I was gonna ask actually before this began, if I'm allowed to ask questions. We're allowed to ask questions to each other to build that conversation so that we can better understand who we are. Um, that's probably like a, just a piece of the type of leadership I'd wanna bring. And I think even others of you in this room is how do we listen to one another, understand each other, and then actually work together? Because it's easy to get polarized. We're in a national Because it's easy to get polarized. We're in a national climate where things are very polarizing. How do we disarm ourselves of the biases we hold and come and listen to one another, even when we might not disagree at times? Um, I feel like I bring that level of experience with my youth leadership work. I also bring it from a sports advocacy perspective, um, just trying to access universal ways in which we can break down barriers and appreciate our existences more. Yeah, we all have different stories or come from different backgrounds, but at the very end of the day, we're human beings. And that's why I believe politics should be about us being human beings and caring for one another and finding the way past those obstacles and remembering who's being left out.
And the answer is yes, you can ask questions of other candidates. How could we stop you?
Before moving on, I just wanna open the floor to those who haven't had a chance to talk.
On this, on this question, yeah, okay. Um, cause I've talked a lot about others. So, um, I, I, I'm gonna jump around just, just a little bit, but I'll, I'll answer the, the question you, uh, you asked us to first. So, uh, I, I've run departments with dozens of staff, uh, with thousands of volunteers, uh, with operations, not just across the country, but around the world in my current role for the Harvard Graduate School of Education. I had, um, large, um, administrative roles before that have run, uh, budgets in the millions of dollars. So I, I do have administrative experience that I bring. I also have educator experience that I bring. I facilitated conversations for literally thousands of students about civic engagement. And I hope to continue to talk about civic engagement, um, as, as a city and make that, um, really something that we, we consider what we owe each other, what we owe our community, um, how we're engaging with our democracy, um, and continue to facilitate, um, you know, the, the kinds of discourse that, that I have throughout my career. But with regard to some of what's been said, which I think is, is important to, uh, to come back to. Uh, Luis, uh, you know, you, you talked about seeking out the expertise of, of staff. Um, I, I actually think something that's interesting about Cambridge, unlike a lot of cities that are similar size and unlike Boston, is that we only have one staff person um, for city counselor, right? Um, and so that city counselor often has to, um, rely on someone who's also doing constituent services to basically be their legislative director. They really don't have capacity to, to draft things. That's why you so often have situations where an interest group, uh, you know, will pass along a policy order and then it will appear unamended without a single comma changed in, in, in the record, right? Um, and so, and, and that's, and, and I think that works when it works. But when, um, it's, you know, interest groups that one might disagree with that propose something like that, then, then it's a real problem, okay? Um, and I do think we need greater policy expertise on the council. Uh, Boston has four or five, uh, staff, staff people per, per city counselor. Uh, I think that would, that would do a lot. Um, as far as the mix of experience and, and what we really need on council, I think it's someone that has, uh, we really need a, a variety of experience. But I think one aspect of this experience that is not often talked about is a, um, is working class experience. So I think there are very few folks on the council, I believe, who have had working class jobs. There's very few people who have, you know, waited tables, served drinks, worked in hospitality. Um, not really entirely by design, more due to the Great Recession, but I've done all those things and I know what it's like to earn minimum wage as an adult. And I know what it's like as an adult to struggle to pay rent uh, without any sort of, you know, parental or, you know, su- support. I know what it's like to, uh, not know where you're gonna get your health insurance. I know what it's like to, um, struggle to and feel overwhelmed applying for government benefits. Um, all those things, uh, are, are important to bring. And we all bring a different sort of piece, piece of the pie, right? But, um, I would like to see more renters on council. I think right now we have very few, if, I, I might be wrong, but I believe Jiven's the only one. Um, and I think we also need folks that have that deep lived experience of actually, um, you know, work, working hard and struggling. But, but the other thing that I think is important, uh, that newcomers can bring is, uh, an outside perspective to these sort of insider politics that we have here. And, um, one, just, just a few examples of this, right? We often talk about this election and we say, there's one open seat. There's not one open seat. There's nine open seats. Just the fact that we talk about it this way is a self-fulfilling prophecy. And I think sometimes in our limited media, sometimes this, this can also, uh, be, be something that, that, that we see. It's sort of a, almost a, an unstated expectation that there's only one seat that's up for grabs, right? Um, and I think if you're looking at it as an outsider who's not enmeshed in the, in the political process, you could actually understand that, uh, anyone, if, if they voted the wrong way, if they haven't held up their end of the bargain, anyone can be unelected, right? Um, and the other part of it is super PACs, right? Which is something we haven't talked about yet. We have these two large housing super PACs in this city, ABC and CCC. And folks are accountable to the interests of the super PAC. And so it might be true, Berhan, that, you know, some counselors maybe haven't been on the council for more than two or three terms. Uh, although as, as I, uh, you know, mentioned, a lot of them were on school committee before that. They were still part of the general political machine. But even if you replace the counselors, the interests they serve stay the same, right? And so the system continues to run. It doesn't matter who's elected. I mean, frankly, for even most of us, uh, both this round and the next round of the conversation, you could, you know, probably, uh, take nine random people and not much is gonna change on council, right? Because the interests that folks are serving, and I'm just being very transparent, are the same interests. Uh, it's, it's ABC, it's CCC, it's CBS, even though CBS endorsed me, right? It, it, it's all those groups. Um, and, and I think it takes outsiders to change that.
I'd like to add on to that. I very much agree with the working class component. Like even for me, my first job, I was 14. I was a dishwasher at a restaurant. And you learn more than just dishwashing, right? Even if it's something as simple as delivery, seeing delivery trucks, when they're coming in, where, you know, the component on how they're going to have those deliveries, whether it's issues with parking the truck or, you know, interfering with bike lanes, right? That's one of those issues that could happen. Um, but something I'd like to address, uh, about the increasing of staff. One of my biggest concerns when I hear that is generally speaking, I'm completely on board with you. We need bigger staffs. But currently how it stands, counselors have an aide, right? And the amount of people that I've talked to that can't get ahold of a counselor. I've sent emails myself that haven't gotten respond to, a response to for weeks. I have talked to people that have said they've sent emails that are just never responded to. Um, I have on my website, a, um, meet with me link where I have four hours, two days a week for half hour segments. This week was the first week where it was completely booked up after the forums. And the amount of people that have said they're excited that they could talk to someone. I talked to an executive director of one of the larger nonprofits in Cambridge and we had a, a meeting for about an hour. And at the end, he said, this is the first time that I've ever had a council candidate or counselor reach out to have a one-on-one meeting and he's been in his role for over 10 years. That sort of attitude is just, it's ridiculous. So what I'm concerned about is if we went from one staff member to four, are counselors going to be more accessible? Are they going to answer to what they're doing? And it's not necessarily that I have an issue with the adding of staff. Um, but I very much have a concern about the accessibility and are residents actually going to see a benefit? Cause currently how it stands, a lot of counselors, they're not doing their job. Their job is to talk to people, to explain what they're doing, not just to vote on it, but also to get feedback. And that's not happening. And then on the PACs thing, I would love if one of you has a question on finance, if that's coming. So I'll, I'll hold back hoping that there's something on campaign finance. Um, but it's definitely a major concern in the city.
But Zion, they only need 2,300 votes. So you're calling and you may be somebody who is, um, not necessarily on the same path as they are. Why should they respond? And, you know, they can demand action and they can demand data from CDD, which has lots of staff. And they don't. Didn't you know, it's just, it's just unbelievable. Inclusionary zoning was passed in 19, um, I think it was in 1989 or something like that. And the last update was, was done in 2018. Don't you think things have changed? I have asked for two weeks for a list of inclusionary zoning units that have been added. Crickets. Why? They have to have the information. I mean, that's a simple Excel spreadsheet.
And I saw a hand here.
Oh, I was, um, yeah, I, I would just like to say, like, just if, if, even if you increase staff, you still have to count, have a counselor that's gonna do something with that information. And the same thing with experts, like, we can have all of the Harvard experts that we want, all the MIT experts, all the policy experts, but we have to have a council that knows what to do with that information. And sometimes expertise, expertise can actually be to a detriment as it, it kind of puts into framing that this is the only way that you can do something. So you have to have kind of the, the sensibility to say, okay, this is the data we have, but also listening to residents and saying, this is what we're hearing there. And so it's being able to hold those multiple points and being able to action on them. And I think that's where we struggle is even if we are able to get two counselors or from what I've heard to residents, even if they are able to pull the data, they're not seeing those things put into action. And so it's, it's like, uh, uh, again, it comes down to, I think, lack of accountability across the board by the city.
Berhan, I saw a hand.
Um, sure. Uh, I was gonna say, I'll put on my defending council hat for a second. Uh, I, I was gonna say, I think that, you know, um, obviously, you know, um, there's, um, you know, lots of opinions that are not reflected on council, right? Um, I think that, you know, there's tens of thousands of different opinions on the city. And so certainly, um, there's always space for, uh, more. Um, I, I was going to say a few things. One is that, like, um, you know, I, I get conflicted on like the community feedback bit in that, like, uh, on one hand, it's like, we ask for people for feedback a lot actually on city council. It's not just like the city council meetings, but it's like, you know, uh, it's like every time there's a development year, you, you have a chance to give a public opinion, right? Uh, there's like, from everything, from like a couple of meetings on like Memorial Drive closures to there's gonna be construction on your street, to actually we're changing the tree canopy, to actually we're changing like our climate resiliency bills, right? Um, and, you know, it's actually, there's like a block party for fun things. Actually, there's like school stuff going on. Um, you know, it's a lot we ask of people who are very busy in their own lives to chime in consistently as well, right? Um, and I think that sometimes we hide behind community process a lot, right? Um, we genuinely have a difference of opinions, right? And we might even have similar values, but different tactics of how we go about it. And I think a very common refrain you hear is like, well, I just was not heard. That, you know, like, there was not enough place for me to give impact. And what's paradoxical about that is that you hear that most often from the people who show up a lot. And I think it's that, you know, there's a difference between being heard in that like, yes, like, I hear your concerns, like, I took them into account versus I'm doing what you said. Like, there are some things where you just have to make a decision and like, people will end up reasonably on different sides of it.
So we are at that a little bit, a few minutes past the halfway point. So I do wanna turn it back to my colleague, Mark. Um, Zion, would you like to find a word? Yeah, I had something that's, I think is really important that it's recognized. Um, we're referencing defending the council. I think that's something that I see a lot is all incumbents defend the council. Right now, we're talking about one open seat. It's this mentality that there's one open seat, we can add somebody and once they're in, then we'll get back to the defending of the current council. And it keeps the same administration and it makes it so that everyone feels like their seat is solidified. To me, I don't think that there's one seat open. I know that a lot of the other challengers are aware. I think that I've talked to a lot of residents that have been convinced that there is only one seat available and I don't see it that way. Um, I also would like to state, excuse me, that when it comes to, uh, you know, residents being heard, right? The, when there's a development project, now that they're by right, that means they're not heard. I've been on a call where a developer was incredibly rude to an older woman who's asking about a project that's only one house down from where she lives. She's lived there for 30 years. She's asking questions. Was she asking the most targeted questions, understanding the complete component of the development? No, but most residents don't. That's not their job. Their job is to, whatever they do during their day, right? And right now, they're feeling really frustrated because they're not being heard. There's a process where we check off a box saying we had community input. We don't actually listen to people. It's something, and if people are saying that it's true, then how come someone can send an email for two weeks and not get a response? And yes, it is the same people. It's the people that care about their city. And now there's a lot of residents that are starting to talk about how they aren't heard. And we'll see, this election cycle, you know, it is very hard with the PACs because there's a lot of money behind it. And even right now with, with PACs that directly donate to candidates or developers that donate to candidates, right? There's this whole group that allows a large financing, which allows more door knockers. It allows flyers to be sent. It really gives incumbents a huge advantage. And it's something that I just think is really important that we're recognizing that we're all candidates here, right? There is no one seat open and I don't think there should be any defending of the council. It should be every person is, I'm a representative, I was elected and my job is to do my job, not to defend the council. Out of fairness, I, I will let Berhan respond. And like Mark said earlier, uh, we have 45 more minutes to, to get your, your opinions in if, uh, if we missed it now. But Berhan, please, 30 seconds.
Sure. Um, I just didn't wanna get things conflated. Like, I think open seat is a standard term we use, right? Like, someone can challenge Ed Markey and I know many people are thinking about it, but you would not say that's an open seat, even though obviously Ed Markey can lose. I started off this conversing, this conversation by saying, in the last three elections, two incumbents have lost. Just wanted to say, like, very possible the incumbents lose. It happens all the time in this city. I was just using what I thought was standard, uh, uh, terminology. And like, the second part is like, like, I, I think that we just have a difference of opinion on what it means to hear people. Like, if you ask me about the change of meeting, it's like, you know, like, the thing that we ended up changing was the ability of like local, like the surrounding community to stop a project. And I think that's what I mean in terms of we, like, just because you're heard doesn't mean that you get what you necessarily want at the end. But like, you know, I think that this developer might have been acting terribly and probably was if they were not responding to a question. And I think that that's something different.
Thank you.
I just have a fact issue. Um, I looked at the last 15 years of elections and as far as I can tell, only four incumbents have lost elections. There are incumbents who decided not to run because it is a very, very challenging job. But four incumbents have lost elections in the last 15 years. That suggests to me that there is a real important advantage to being an incumbent.
Sure. Mark, please.
I actually wanted to use some time to follow up on something Stan brought up. Uh, somewhere in the Venn diagram of Hegel and Adam Smith, we do have these PACs, we have these organizations. And theoretically, they all have emerged. They've all arisen and they all have power because they do reflect what people in the community care about and want. I'm interested in hearing some thoughts on whether in fact this feels, trying to avoid using the word perverted, that the, that the presence of these organizations somehow don't reflect the community fully uh, with having, you know, we've had, uh, ABC and CCC. We have, uh, the Cambridge Bike Safety Group and we've had reactions to that in lawsuits filed. Like, I do feel like there's a dialectic. Is it not reflecting what the community thinks?
It's a dialectic, but the tone of it is adversarial. It's like, you're either with us or against us. And demonizing developers is, is, I'm sorry, just not gonna get the job done. We're not gonna develop housing without developers. We've gotta decide what kind of housing we want and we need to help fund development that we want. And the thing is, I was endorsed by CCC. I've been a small-time developer. I'm in favor of housing development. But, and I said that very clearly and it was okay. Now, ABC, which I was a partner, I joined and I, you know, did some fundraising or whatever with them, um, did not endorse me and I understand, um, what that's all about as well. But the fact is, it's the tone they set that somehow or other, we have to have a battle line here. Like, you're over there and I'm over here. That's not the way it should be. We are, we share values and that we should try to reach across those boundaries and create bridges. Because I think it puts city counselors in a very difficult position too. Because if you do something that is not endorsed by one of these committees, you're not likely to get their endorsement the next time if it's one of those big issues. And I think multifamily housing was passed in part because people were afraid to vote against it, even though it was done too quickly and not carefully enough.
Yeah, I think that, like, with the both PACs, it becomes a contest of who can mobilize the best. Who's the best organized, whose, um, kind of supporters can show up at public meeting the most and kind of counsel, the impression that people have, which might not be true, is that counselors just go through and count the number of responses at pro or for an issue. And that's it. And that's how the things are decide, decided is the consensus a lot amongst a lot of people. And so if you're not in one of those things, it's, you're kind of left in the middle of not, your opinion not making it into the conversation. Um, and I just wanna broach on kind of Berhan's point of like, we might be listening, but you still might not get the outcome. But that outcome, I think that's where there's nuance with the public comment and, um, public feedback process. Of even if it's not the exact outcome, some people might be like, this is what I want. That's only the outcome that they can think of. If we actually kind of take a step back and say, what is the underlying need that they're trying to communicate there? That should be included in the outcome. So we should be looking at not only the needs of kind of, we, everybody wants more affordable housing. I'm a renter. I would love my rent to go down, like, that's just the basis. But I also value community. And so making sure that we're putting in housing that is appropriate, that's going to foster community. And those things can coexist. You can, they can be done successfully. It's just might take a little bit more effort and work. And so how do we, when we talk about, um, solutions, really focus on, like, what is the shared goal that we're moving towards? And I think the PACs kind of, I do think it is a perversion in that it's either if you're, like I said, if you say anything wrong against bikes, you're against bike safety and you want our children to get bike cars. That's not the case. Um, or if you are against housing, then you like are only for, like, rich people living in the city. A lot of the people that I've talked to that are on the other side of that housing issue are actually like, no, we really value multifamily. multifamily and affordable housing. Again, it's more concern about the impacts and how unintentional, um, consequences. So but like, uh, it's funny, because when you talk to people, there's more similarities than there are differences, but that is not being reflected in the public comment, and I think the PACs kind of exacerbate that.
So I'm hearing you say that you feel like the organizations are taking positions that are driving public discourse farther apart rather than together.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and a lot of it is, really, there is an old and a young thing here. Let's face it, CCC has a lot of older people. I happen to be one of those older people, but I don't agree with everything that they say. And ABC is largely younger people, and we need all of those voices. That's right. And we need everybody's voices, but they don't need to be shouting at each other. They just don't.
And when you talk to people individually, they're actually generally, like, I've talked to people from ABC, CCC, like, I got CCC endorsement, but it's, people are generally reasonable, but that doesn't serve kind of the organizing part of the pack and getting supporters, so it kind of becomes a monster of its own creation.
Brendan, I'm sorry, Aya, Brendan Zine.
Um, I just wanted to quickly go back to the terminology thing on open seat, just to give you credit, because you're right, that's part of political culture here, is that like, it's this is how we use, that's how we talk about politics. Um, so I just wanna piece that and maybe that you didn't have the intentions to speak in it that way, but we do have a general political culture that, yeah, it's just one seat open, but yeah, in reality, you're absolutely right, Stan. All seats are open. Um, in terms of the the PACs and just the dynamics of our political landscape with groups, it's tough. Like, I'll be honest, I am a democratic socialist. I believe in socialist forms of housing. And ABC and CCC did not align with the type of housing that I wanted to put on our platform. And so I, in a way, is like, when you are not taken in by either of these groups, it makes you running a lot harder, because they have so much political influence and they have the resources to be able to get your word out. And in that way, being able to have conversations with Stan, for example, who understands that we aren't like trying to take either helps move us in a direction that centers the type of approaches to housing that we want. And so our campaign has modeled social housing very similar to Stan's, insofar that like, maybe it doesn't need to be this or that, like, maybe we can bridge a third lane. So that has, in a really good way, inspired other people's campaigns, and I think this came up in the ABC forum to talk about social housing. And it's like, okay, we weren't endorsed by either ABC or CCC, and yet people are talking about social housing. So in that way, it, there are difficulties that come with not taking from groups, but it's not to say, right? You carry on, you keep going, because when your campaign has a message that you really wanna deliver, that these current systems that we approach housing on specifically are just not cutting it, and they're not building sustainably affordable housing. So, again, our campaign centering our philosophy on centering the most vulnerable, we talk about who's getting displaced, whose stories are forgotten. And it's like, this model has a way to bring in market rate housing, middle income housing, low income housing, deeply affordable housing, and level out essentially what we now have in Cambridge, which is you're either quite wealthy or you don't have a lot of money, um, and are trying to just get by. So there's, there's hope. I like to think there's hope, even when things can feel polarized in terms of these groups.
I do wanna.
Um, I was just going to say, um, I I think that the council, like, individual counselors take a lot of, uh, difficult votes, even despite endorsements from time to time, right? Um, but I think, you know, obviously multifamily housing has been the discussion of a lot of the conversation, both here and in the community. And, you know, like, two of the colleagues have voted for it, like, uh, Paul was like once endorsed by ABC and then endorsed by CCC the other time, right? Patty was endorsed by CCC and like before and then voted for it and is now not endorsed by CCC, right? And you have this like switching of different things. I think that, you know, Cambridge Bike Safety endorsed Alana, and then as, and her last term on city council, she voted on a different way on bike lanes. And I would say, you know, uh, individual counselors, I think, that have like their own opinions and, you know, I think that certainly it's helpful to have organized constituencies of like, this is a group and this is what they care about. But I think that, you know, we're so local, and, you know, as you said, like, everyone represents like twenty-five hundred number one votes, that like you are able to kind of stitch together your own constituency in different sorts of ways.
Well, I appreciate you, Aya, for talking about just the term open seat is just generally, you know, a term that you use. And I I think it is, but I think that's our political system, not just here in Cambridge, but just generally speaking, it's very much built, it's built by incumbents, for incumbents, right? Um, I mean, if you look at who writes the rules, it's people that are currently there, right? Um, but when we're talking about, you know, PACs and and the the history behind them, right? Um, I read a really insightful Cambridge, uh, not Cambridge, uh, Harvard Crimson article about PACs and where they get their funding, right? And I I looked at a map, they have a really good visual that shows where different funding comes from. And for ABC from twenty-twenty-one until twenty-twenty-four, a lot of their funding came from New York City. I don't know if any of you have friends in New York City, but New York City has their own housing affordable issue, right? They they have plenty of issues. And I don't mean to demonize developers. I actually had a meeting with a developer just recently. He lives a couple of, uh, streets down from a project that he's working on, and we got to talk about how development works properly. My point is that if you truly believe that development is important in the city, you shouldn't need to get paid thousands of dollars from developers towards your campaigns to have those points. So it has nothing to do with the developers themselves, but more to do with the large amount of funds that are coming from PACs, that are coming from developers. Um, at the end of the day, like, the the first thing that I said in my campaign, the first statement that I put out was that I wouldn't be taking any money from PACs. And, um, even, you know, I really respect both of your decisions not to take in endorsements from, uh, CCC or ABC. I think that's, uh, you know, a a different campaign strategy. It's something that I even considered myself, is just will I run without any endorsements as a whole? Um, I did find organizations that seemed to understand my concerns. I've been hopping on so many calls, uh, related to these development projects. And just realizing that this by right structure is just, it's not healthy for the city. Um, so I found groups that you know, agreed with that, and it's not just groups that have PACs, like there's Care Housing, which is an organization that endorsed me that I think they have a really good view on how we need to make sure that we're protecting people that put solar, right? You know, you put solar and then your neighbor goes up from a two-story building to six stories, or possibly they're talking about eight stories or eighteen stories, right? If it gets that high, we can make it so that a neighbor who decided to put thirty thousand dollars into this this, uh, setup that allows them to have a lot more green energy, which is really good, we can have it so that now it's useless, the whole system is useless. And they put in all that money. There's no system here where the developer pays for the system, how much they pay, you know, to install it and all of those costs. So when it comes to the PACs, I think that they're, um, that overall Cambridge would be better without any of these, uh, super PACs. I think that big money normally, um, does kind of uh, distract from the real problems that we have. Um, and then there's a whole conversation, and I've talked to a lot of challengers about financing, campaign financing as a whole. And I think there's a lot of different opinions on on how we could approach that. But I do think that having uh, big checks from developers, not developers are the problems, but the big checks that they could write or their family can write um, is a problem, and also the amount of money that candidates get from PACs.
And and just out of fairness, I would like to open the floor to Stan and Dana before jumping back to Elizabeth.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. So I I think we need to also, um, really take a close look at the very low voter participation rates that we have here in Cambridge, right? So if those PACs really represented voters, that we wouldn't have such a large proportion of voters, feel totally alienated from the political system, um, as as they do. And as a lot of folks have said, they are really driving the conversation to the polls. And the vast majority of the people that I speak to at the door are really somewhere in the middle. Um, I think you alluded to this, Elizabeth, you know, they, uh, they do want, a lot of folks want affordable housing. Um, a lot of folks want to make sure that the housing that's going to be built is actually going to be affordable. They wanna make sure that it's going to be affordable for the folks who are already here, rather than the potential, uh, well-off folks who might be moving to Cambridge in the future. Um, and I think all those are really valid concerns. And I think unfortunately, there's not really a PAC that, uh, is is there for the folks that are in the middle, right? I I'll give you, you know, I'll give you an example, um, you know, uh, even with with biking, uh, even with with the CBS endorsement that I received that I'm ve- I'm very grateful for, because I'm I absolutely believe that we should take bicycle safety very seriously. But, uh, I I had on my website that, um, there might be instances where we need to make sure we're providing more parking for folks. And, uh, I, from several CBS folks, I've gotten some some hate mail for it. Um, I live next to Mount Auburn Hospital, and I don't know if you all are familiar with with the area, but there's some massive construction going on there right now. And I see in the heat people who are in their eighties limping two blocks down the street to get to the hospital that that they require serious medical attention because there's not enough parking in in the garage there, okay? So when I'm talking about building more parking, it shouldn't be a binary. That shouldn't immediately feel like an attack against folks that are for, that are for bike lanes. All right, there there are opportunities to do both. And I feel that that's what these PACs have done, is that they've really polarized the debate. And back to Aya's point with regard to, and I know that there's, there's, uh, even among sort of CBS issues, there there's some disagreement, um, even among people that I that I agree with maybe. But with regard to Aya's point on, um, alternatives to the housing, there really isn't any home for people like, uh, I think myself and Aya that are interested in public alternatives that are actually delivering for folks below fifty percent AMI. Because, uh, you know, ABC, and I think this is really critical. I think if you go around and you ask every candidate here, most of them are going to say, um, I I support affordable housing, right? But the question is, who's actually fighting for housing below people that are, for people that are below fifty percent area median income, right? That's the one for a single person making fifty-six thousand dollars or less per year, right? So the the new housing that's coming on board due to the upzoning uh, has a certain amount of inclusionary units that are required, but those units are not accessible unless you already have a Section Eight voucher uh, or a municipal voucher now, of which there are only twenty. Um, they're not accessible to folks that, uh, are making below that fifty-six thousand dollar a year threshold, right? And so if you're someone like me that really cares about folks at that lower end of the income ladder, where do you go? Where's your home? Right? Uh, as far as these super PACs. And I think that's that's part of the problem. But lastly, I'll say that, you know, organizations like ABC uh, and CCC both claim that they really, uh, wanna fight for affordable housing. Um, but we saw what that fight looks like last spring when there was an incredibly tepid response from both of those groups to, uh, when the Transitional Wellness Center was closing. They didn't show up, they didn't really support um, our efforts to keep the Transitional Wellness Center open. Um, they didn't support housing adjacent programs like Rise Up Continuing, right? So we we can talk all about how we wanna really build affordable housing for people that are low income. But if you don't fight for it, if you don't fight on occasion the city manager for it, if you don't fight other elected officials for it, if you don't, uh, show up and make the moral case for at a time when low-income people around the country are coming under attack by the Trump administration, us showing a progressive alternative to that mindset here in Cambridge by keeping people housed, if you don't make that case, everything else is just rhetoric. So, and I think that that's what a lot of these super PACs are about, is rhetoric. Um, so I think that's why I'm not accepting an endorsement, is I'm I'm someone who's in the, I'm someone who's very much uh, between these positions. I don't believe in the polls, and I also don't believe in the rhetoric.
Can I, can I just quickly say, um?
I would like to just give the floor to Dana, should I have a chance to speak it?
Uh, sure, uh, don't talk too long. Um, well, I think that it's an important question with respect to PACs. And I want to be sure that we're not conflating two different concepts, which is the productivity of having different interest groups, as in, you know, residents coming together who share a value that they consider incredibly important, and joining forces to advocate for that value. That's an interest group. I think they should remain here, and I think that they do represent some residents who believe in that interest group. And to a degree, you know, the fact that they can get a lot of people mobilizing, that does speak something about how many people are interested in getting involved. Now, there's interest groups, and then I think a separate concept is what what role does money play in that, right? And so people question sometimes, all right, well, a particular interest group or a particular candidate takes a lot of money from developers. Okay, um, I mean, I pledge not to take money from developers, and frankly, the main reason why is because I don't wanna have that conversation about whether my views are biased because of that. Because I think the most detrimental part of having money be part of this conversation is not just that it may in fact alter the or or influence the outcomes um, relative to people who just don't have those financial resources, but also it just undermines trust in people's ability to make real authentic decisions about what they think the right thing is to do, because they could be being paid off, right? So, I mean, one topic that I do think is relevant here that does not get discussed enough is I mean, everyone kind of agrees, I think, here as well as beyond, that having a lot of influence of money, especially from very wealthy donors, is a corrosive force to our politics. It just is. And I don't think people talk about it as much because we're swimming in it, right? You know, part of the whole experience of running for office is you're expected to be on the phone with people who can give money. And guess what? A really efficient way to do that is to find the people with the most money, then you have to make fewer calls. That is a terrible way to do things, because even, I mean, even if that money didn't change hands, you end up spending a lot of time on the phone with the richest people around. You end up hearing their opinions disproportionately more than everybody else's. Is that a great way to run things? Of course it isn't. It's terrible. And I think everybody agrees. And perhaps the reason people don't talk about this a lot is because they think there's nothing we can really do about it. I mean, you know, there have been constitutional amendments that prohibit, uh, fully publicly funded elections. That's very, that's that's very sad, in my opinion. I think it's terrible. But the fact is, we can do something. And that something is, we can lower the amount that any given individual can donate to a campaign. I mean, right now, maximum any individual can donate is a thousand dollars, except by the state, that's better than a lot of areas. We can, we can lower it even more. Why not a hundred dollars? Boulder, Colorado did it. They petitioned the state, and guess what? They did it. And I think that's so exciting. I mean, money is in my view, it's related, but it is distinct from whether there should be interest groups. And I think the money part is corrosive. And Cambridge could do that. I mean, Boulder, Colorado is comparable in, um, in size to Cambridge, and we should at least try. I mean, Cambridge, like, as much as, you know, folks who've been here a long time may or may not think this, I mean, we're a special place. I mean, we're the first municipality in the whole country to issue a same-sex marriage license. We have been, you know, the origin of so many different ideas, and we should be at the forefront of this. I mean, this is one of these issues that is not just this incremental change, right? This is, I think, kind of fundamentally changing how the political system works. It's part of the DNA. And so I think it would have radiant, radiating impacts.
Oh, sure. I just wanted to say, we we did promise to return to Elizabeth. Um, and I just will say that, um, for the sake of time, we are entering our last half hour of this forum. Uh, and so our final question, like all these questions build on the current conversation, so if you didn't get a chance to get your point in now, there will be an opportunity in the next thirty minutes. Elizabeth?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, going back to housing, that I think a group that's not necessarily being represented by any special interest groups or the conversation is the people in the middle who aren't necessarily going to qualify for affordable housing. They're not the one percent that are living in the giant mansions on Rattle Street. And most of those people, they, sometimes they're renters, sometimes they are homeowners. Most of the times, they're young families, and those are the people that were losing the most in Cambridge. And so I would like to see more conversations around how do we make sure their needs are being listened to? And oftentimes, they're not able to come to public comment because they're working really hard at their jobs, trying to take care of their families. So how do we do a better job of including them, so we're not just also polarized on, if you like, affordable housing is like our one note? But how do we make housing affordable across the spectrum and make it so that we can better support our young families in Cambridge?
A side note to Dana, just before we go to Aya for the last word on this, and then Nico's final question. Um, there was an attempt at some municipal campaign reform a couple of terms ago, I believe, led by Quinton Zondervan. And it just didn't get through.
Oh, the state?
Uh, it didn't get through at the city council level to then go to the state.
All right.
Um, but, uh, maybe new council will bring it up again.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, I'm right there with you on the middle income side, and that's part of why social housing is could be such a beautiful tool to bring in, again, middle income, low income, market rate housing, to help rebalance what our city looks like and make sure people are not displaced. Because there are stories like in the Port area where I listen to people who are literally struggling to get by and are questioning whether or not that they can afford to live in Cambridge the next year. I mean, I myself didn't even know if I was gonna live in Cambridge this year because my landlord jacked up my rent, and he was also a really bad landlord. So there are a lot of struggles, and part of why Stan and I wanted to step outside of these two groups is because we believe there's another approach that doesn't necessarily lean on what these two groups are doing. And I just also wanna say, I'm right there with you, uh, Dana, on the financing stuff. Yeah, we need a, we need a lot of work there.
We're in the homestretch, Nico?
And Burhan, maybe we can start with you. Again, these questions build on the current conversation. So when I'm not moderating city council forums, uh, I teach political communication at Emerson College. So when I'm not moderating city council forums, I teach political communication at Emerson College. And so I'm very fascinated with the rise of not only political violence, but political polarization. And while the spotlight is often on our national politics, a lot of that polarization is coming home to the local level. And so as a leader or as a candidate to become a leader, how do you approach having difficult conversations? And how do we bring back civility, whether it's between PACs, as we outlined earlier, or individual candidates with opposing views? Berha, would you like to start?
Sure. So I wanted to build off a little bit of what was said about campaign finance before. We're really in a paradoxical situation in some ways in that, like, the reason we have IE PACs in the city is because the Supreme Court says that you can manage individual contributions, right? So like, what you contribute to a city council campaign, like a city estate can limit, right? Which we do, right? There's a $1,000 cap. You can argue about it being lower. But you cannot limit contributions to an IE PAC. And so if you lowered it to $100, which I would be fine with, you're actually giving those IE PACs more power because they'll be able to still get like how many of our $1,000 they want from any individual, right? And I think that it's also worthwhile to say that there's actually two sources of polarization or corruption from money, which is, one, is that, you know, if you're really wealthy, you can just dump a lot of money in politics. And then the second is like, you know, I think this goes for all of us. Like, if you ask, like, who donates to our campaign, it's usually not your media and resident. It's someone who has very strong ideological opinions about what to do in their city. And then so they're willing to spend some of their free cash in a donation to a city council campaign. I think that's why, to like build upon what you were saying, like, I think Seattle has a working out, like, just giving everyone like a voucher. Like, you can spend this on a city council campaign, but then everyone in the city gets one. It's basically like a fully publicly funded campaign. And I think that's really exciting, right? Because then everyone gets, like, here's $10, $100, whatever the amount is, that you can go and donate to a candidate, and it's already like given to you in a voucher. So it's like an even playing field for everyone. So I think that that would be super exciting. I I think just to build on, I think that there's like difficulties. Like, I think that the city council by and large does do a good job of disagreeing and then trying to get to unanimous or like, you know, I think sometimes there's but trying to get to common ground, right? For all that, you know, I think that proponents of like the missing middle the multifamily housing petition were upset by how it came out. Like, it went through a bunch of compromises, and we got to a place where it was A1. And that's generally how most of the zoning stuff has come, where it's introduced in an initial version, and then we kind of try to get to a place that's consensus oriented. And that wasn't always the case, right? Like, there was a time at which the Affordable Housing Overlay pa Affordable Housing Overlay failed, that, you know, C2, K2 failed, and that a lot of zoning amendments were just not getting there. And then we didn't go from four, five, like, if fails by one vote to just passing by one vote. We've gotten to a place where it passes by one, and that, I think, is due to a lot of work of trying to find consensus, even when there's deep disagreements, right? I think for all that you hear about, like, you know, we're thinking about corridors next, that like, you know, ah, they're going up soon again. There's lots of people on like my side of the bench who are like, well, why are you going to eight? Because like, eight doesn't financially make sense. You should go to 12, right? Where you have the better unit economics. But, you know, I'm like, you know, our politics is the art of the possible. And so I think that, you know, we're trying, like, I don't win every fight, and other colleagues don't win every fight. But like, I think that especially this council in particular, I think Stanley made a point earlier of like, city councillors get agreed too often. And I was like, that's new to me. I feel like for a long time, we were constantly fighting, and it took a lot of like failed attempts, you know, like, to try to get to a place where it worked. And like, just a final closing word is like, you know, we tried the missing middle housing, which I think made a lot of our friends to on the left sad for, I think, very valid reasons, right? It was just legalizing triple deckers and like maybe like four-unit buildings. But it would not have built enough inclusionary units, right? And that didn't speak to my politics, but also others on the council who are, you know, who really wanted those affordable units. And so actually, in some ways, like, missing the multifamily housing order was built in coalition with the left who was like, we want as many of those low-income affordable units as possible. What numbers can we get to make those work? Even if that results in a bigger housing overlong, it was like a positive sum conversation.
I want to push back a little bit on that A1 because I think that is actually part of the problem is that, like, there is a lot of kind of dissatisfaction with the fact that a lot of the votes do go to kind of an A1 or a unanimous vote where there are still perspectives that are not necessarily being represented in that and kind of the way, again, the way it's being communicated out. So and I don't know, again, you want to get to progress, but also like having different viewpoints represented and, again, communicated more effectively, I think, would go a long way rather than be like, yes, we came to an agreement, but was it the right agreement? I think that's the question that's often posed.
Steering the conversation back to temperament and values and less on policy. Like, how do we approach having difficult conversations? And what do you observe about the climate of of political rhetoric and political polarization here at the local level?
I mean, I can chime in and say, recently talked to a therapist about how they perceive harm and how do we approach harm, especially when it comes to difficult conversations? And she left me with saying, it's the harm that's usually not what's hard. It's the response to harm that's what makes harm very difficult. Because when we're in like difficult conversations and disagreeing on issues, it's a matter of like, who are we centering in the conversation? Whose voices haven't been heard historically, whatever it may be? And then how are we responding to harm when there is harm being done? And it's not to take it back to TWC, but I'll do it briefly. Like, that's an example of that, right? How do we respond to that harm, that risk from them in a way that is productive and centers their dignity? So in that way, I'd like to approach my politics in that sense is like, how do we put the humanity back in our conversations? And when we disagree, do we disagree politely? Or do we turn to hateful rhetoric? Or do we turn to more harmful rhetoric? Which is makes conversations less productive and then ends up stifling conversations even more because then you're like, oh, I don't want to go talk to you because you said something about me that was very harmful. So in that way, like, I would love to approach a politics with all of you, right? In these conversations that we have with each other out on the streets, in here, in city council hall, in public comment, with just remembering that we're human beings. Everybody here has a story, and everybody deserves to be, to live a dignified life. And that's kind of how I approach my civil discourse. When something that is hard to talk about comes up, it could be important for, like, in a group setting, to take a moment to take a breather or put in practices that actually help us level ourselves before engaging or find ways for us to strategize how we can navigate those conversations so they don't just become a mess in city councils. It's like, this person's got to chime in to say their part. Well, then it becomes like we're doing politics to respond, not to listen. And I think people are just, again, looking for an air of politics where they're just being listened to and understood. And guess what? Like, when we approach things with empathy and curiosity, like, there's a lot of room in which we can find agreeing on. We just have to see one another for who we are as human beings.
I think I think we're kind of missing the the program here. Rhetoric and conversations are really not what's going to solve problems in Cambridge or anywhere else. We're going to have to agree to certain kind of goals that we have for the legislation we pass. And we are going to have to make the city staff accountable and the city councillors accountable for making sure that things happen. And we don't have a whole lot of time now because, you know what? We're running out of money. And so what we need to do is find a way to have the staff prepare information that says, what is the housing that's needed? We don't even have a housing need study. We're just taking a shot in the dark that we need this, that, or the other thing, and we have 15% of affordable housing. Is that enough? Is that too much? And what has that done to the whole housing environment? We don't know. I think one of the things that could happen is if we're talking about what we're going to do and how we disagree with how we're going to do it and actually measure what we're doing and where that money goes and what happens when we spend it. Because, you know, Rise Up should never have been cut off. There was no reason for it. This city has lots of money. And if it can't find money to spend on those 7,000 families, then or 7,000 people, I guess it was, then what are you doing?
Dana?
Yeah, so, I mean, going going back to the question, I mean, I think temperament is very important when choosing a councillor because the councillor's job is multifaceted. They have to be, they have to think deeply about issues. They have to come up with worthwhile solutions. But they also have to work with each other, and they have to work with constituents. And oftentimes, they won't agree, and you could say talk is cheap, and I agree to a certain degree. I think people should be held accountable for their actions. But completely alienating all of your colleagues because you disagree is not a great means to an end. So I do think that there is an art to being to to being able to collaborate with those who with whom you disagree. And that does involve creating a council, my belief. That is a microcosm of the world, how you want the world to behave to each other. I mean, people deserve dignity. The vulnerable people in our community deserve dignity. Your colleagues also deserve dignity. And even if you didn't care about treating them like human beings or you somehow didn't have any humanity or anything, it's still a worthwhile thing to do because you need to come to a coordinated, you know, you need to come to a coordinated solution. You have to work with them in a productive way.
Just to clarify, are you speaking in generalities? Are you thinking of an example from the past term or two where a policy didn't go through because of an alienated constituency or colleagues, I guess, is what you're talking about?
Oh, well, I mean, I I think I'm speaking mostly, well, I'm speaking about the entire process. I'm not thinking of any particular policy, if that's what you're asking, no. But but I am thinking, I am just speaking to the fact that I do think people who, you know, who who are open-minded, are willing to work with others, treat them with dignity, not like, you know, focus on any particular acts. They have to grind, but really work toward a solution is valuable.
Sarah?
Yeah, so I have a friend who calls it coffee instead of social media. For me, I'm not a coffee drinker, which is very rare, but I like to say pizza instead of posts. I think that being in person really helps, you know, see someone as human. And I think part of the reason we're getting so divided is because everything's on a digital age where you're typing something. You know, sometimes it's on platforms where you don't even know who it is, right? So it's very easy to get very toxic very quickly. You know, you have a meeting with somebody, and very quickly you start to see, okay, maybe I disagree on this issue, and maybe I agree on this issue, and maybe it has nothing to do with politics, like we both love cats, right? It can be something as small as that. So I think that one of the best ways is to make sure that you're having those human interactions, that we're encouraging people to see people holistically. It's something that I see on the national scale, like, I have a couple of friends that work on the Hill, and a lot of them will say that politicians as a whole, they get along better than their constituents do because they only see it as, oh, you're you voted for this politician, you're a terrible person, or vice versa. And they don't like see the person as a whole person. So I think that one of our biggest issues in our country, especially since COVID, is that we've gotten so used to the digital era that we're no longer focusing on that in-person, you know, community-building component. And I understand unfortunately it happens on a federal level. It's very hard to have someone in, you know, Arkansas, talk to someone in New York and get to know them, especially without a digital component. But inside of a place as small as Cambridge, we really can have those in-person meetings and facilitating community events that have nothing to do with with politics is actually, I think, the best way to kind of bridge some of the gaps that we have when it comes to people connecting.
Berha, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it seems like you're itching again at this conversation.
Oh, no, I had nothing else left.
Okay. All right, my mistake, my mistake. I open the floor. Stan?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So I I just want to say, out of all the interactions I've had with each individual council member, I've all, I've come away believing that they've all been good people. And so I I think that that's important to to remember. And and from what I understand, all the challengers, with maybe limited exceptions based on some checkered legal histories, are also good people. There's there's one that I don't think the media is adequately covering, Mark. But I and and I think that as a constituent, you know, I would be quite offended if if Cambridge had such a such a black mark by by having this person be a city councillor. But otherwise, I think for the most part, people are really good people on city council. However, being a good person isn't enough. You have to be a good leader. And nationally, again, especially at a time of great duress, when and I'll speak as a progressive, if you consider yourself anything left of center, I think there is a a serious movement to, you know, attack our ideology right now and to attack folks that our mission exists to support, right? The folks that are most vulnerable in this country. And this is a time when we need people to show courage. We need people to stand up and unapologetically advocate for the values that they believe in. And those values include things like, you know, fighting inequality. Those values include inclusivity and and diversity. And they also include, you know, being willing to fight back against the Reaganomics principles that are being, you know, spouted in Washington. Cut taxes for the wealthiest folks and cut social services for the the most vulnerable. But I think the same things are happening locally, and they're happening at the state level. And we turn a blind eye to to these things. And so it requires courage, it requires urgency. And I think one of the keys here is that we need folks that are not career politicians, folks that are not just concerned with their reelection. I have no interest in being a career politician. I have no interest in serving. If I do win a few terms, maximum, and that's just me personally. But I do not believe this is a career. I think this is a call to service that people from the community should take on to represent the perspectives they bring with them and then move on, right? And if you stick around too long, you get stuck in the system, you forget all the possibilities outside of it, all the all the political opportunities that that you can bring to bear. And I I think that it's interesting because, you know, with with regard to courage and fighters, we we have all these wonderful things that are brought up right around election time. Around election time, just in the last five or six weeks, I've heard of a lot of councillors bring forward these amazing ideas that a lot of the folks here in this room have been talking about since the spring or for several years before, right? But where was action on those ideas? Democracy vouchers was one of the very first things, Berha, that I that I wrote about when I announced my my campaign. I haven't seen any action on that in city council. I haven't even seen that be mentioned. Yes, Mark, a few terms ago, there was an attempt for campaign finance reform. But, you know, why why did why did we stop advocating for that once it failed, right? The membership has turned over significantly since then. So, you know, social housing, nobody talked about it in the spring. Now, every single person you talk to on this stage and in the next one is going to be supportive of social housing. It's amazing what happens six weeks out from an election. But this is the kind of courage that I'm talking about. Are we still going to have the courage to talk about these issues after the election in January, in February, in March? Or without the prospect of potentially not being reelected, is that somehow going to fall by the wayside? So we need courage and we need urgency.
I also think we need to turn away from the grievance notion, the tone of grievance that has sort of insinuated itself in Cambridge as well. If somebody else gets something, then you don't get it. You're the one who's suffering. They're not suffering. Well, I think that that doesn't encourage a useful conversation to pit people who happen to live in West Cambridge and have more money against people who are who are really underserved by community services and don't have the income. This whole notion that there's a certain size pie, and if I get some, you're not going to get it. This community is big enough for all of it. But those are the kinds of things that seem to dominate the conversations is that you've got to help this group because this group is getting too much. We all need to have a place at the table, and we can all be a part of the solution, not the part of the problem, but not if we think that, if we carry resentment with us from about people who maybe have done purportedly better than we have. Have they? You don't know.
So I will turn it over to Mark for final remarks as we enter kind of the last five minutes of this conversation.
I did get to go.
I was gonna, I was gonna, yeah, that's exactly where I was headed. I was gonna ask if anyone would like to get the final word. Elizabeth, please.
Yeah, so I think in regards to kind of modern politics as a whole, and I think it's trickled down to the council, is the lack of dialogue. And I think dialogue doesn't mean complete agreement. It means that you have a back and forth. And I think being a good colleague doesn't mean that you potentially always come to a very happy consensus. Like, potentially, somebody could be unhappy in that situation, but you kind of disagree and commit. And so I think that's something that I would like to see more of in council is kind of that we are like having respectful disagreements with colleagues. And and again, so we're not having these like unanimous votes where we still have unsaid things on the table. And so, again, like, disagreeing doesn't mean you don't value that person as a human being. But it means that you respect them enough to have that dialogue with them. And so I think we need to be doing more of that as a whole across the country.
So to take us out, I'm going to do our version of a lightning round, which is supposed to take advantage of all the work that you guys have done learning the community and traveling around and meeting new people and finding new businesses and services. So I'm going to ask everyone, if they want to, to just throw out, throw out like to the crowd like something that they would like to endorse or support, favorite bakery, company that is, you know, suffering, and people should know that that service is offered, like something that you want to bring attention to in this final couple of minutes. Do you, Berha, do you want to start? Do you have any?
Sure. I will say, I think Zan brought up coffee earlier. I will say, uh, I think Zion brought up coffee earlier. I think that, uh, I'm always on the hunt on the other end of the spectrum for like the best coffee in town. And I would say that the best moka is a place a lot of people know, which is Cafe 1369, especially their ice moka. But the best latte, I would say, is actually in Satellite, which is a bar. So you wouldn't expect it, but they actually have really good latte.
Interesting. Elizabeth, does anything come to mind?
Oh, yes. So I love Jamie's Ice Cream, but actually for their sorbet because I think they have, like, the, they have the most amazing flavors as somebody that's lactose intolerant. And it's a small, limited-owned business that just opened in Cambridge, I think in January. Um, and I go there an unhealthy amount at this point.
So, you have anything for us?
For me, I'm gonna change it from food because I'm not quite as much of a foodie as I should be. I would say that something that we really need is, is more awareness and participation and support for our nonprofits, whether it's something like, um, the Dance Complex or the Cambridge Community Center, or there's so many different groups, um, you know, I, multi, the Multicultural Arts Center. There's just so many groups that are so impactful. And I think that we need more participation, especially during COVID. Sometimes certain groups, you know, you, you don't get as involved. And now we're starting to get out of that and get more in, involved in our community. And I think that's what I would like to shout out.
Well, I'm gonna be embarrassing it after, after that, but I think that the hot chocolate at Simon's was a revelation.
You don't want to go?
I'll go last. It's okay. Your, your time.
Uh, there's three things that came to mind. I didn't know if you were doing like a local business or just anything, really.
Whatever you want to bring to people's attention.
Okay, I, I would probably say two things, if that's okay. One is bringing more arts to our city because a lot of times artists are struggling to get by in our city. I was speaking to an artist who literally grew up here and is trying to stay here but doesn't think he can because he just can't keep up while trying to make art. So a way to just explore if we can do affordable housing for artists. And then the other is shouting out, um, a local business that I really love, Andela, which is a Palestinian-owned business. In light of everything going on right now, I, I do believe we need to platform more Palestinian.
Louis, what do you got?
Uh, the boundary. Um, it's in our neighborhood, East Cambridge, and they have had Bollywood festivals. They've had many performances. The Day of the Dead was celebrated there, and I dressed up and went there. It's always good to wear a costume.